Roll call please, Ann.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Here.
Ms. Peng?
She's on her way.
Ms. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Podolsky?
Here.
Ms. Madiker?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Mr. Burrell Patel? Two absent, seven present.
Thank you. Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 5th, 2021, and June 30th, 2021. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. So today is the summertime, we do a combined meeting, so we're going to go to closed session. Ann?
Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above started subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Have a second. All right, Mohan Patel and Mrs. White.
Sorry. Motion to adjourn. We have Mr. Burrell Patel is not here. Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Shi?
And Mohan.
Yes.
And Mr. Mohan Patel.
Yes.
All right. So the agenda is short, so we're probably coming back in about an hour. See you guys at about 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we going to reconvene our meeting? Can I have a motion to reconvene the meeting?
Motion.
Okay. Can I have a second? Mrs. White and Mohan Patel.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All present.
All right. So, publicly, you have received the agenda items, right? So, let's see. Okay. Resolution for board discussions. You want to go through this, or?
Yeah, you could go through it.
Yeah, I'll have Dr. Bragan go through this real quick, and then we'll open up for comments, right? So we'll go through this real quick.
All right, we had the personnel. You have that in front of you, the personnel agenda, personnel agenda items for July. We also have under administration, the appointment of Board Secretary, Ms. Anne Gluck, to act in the role as the Board Secretary. We have a calendar adjustment for the 21-22 school calendar, which is, the only adjustment there is it now includes the parent-teacher conferences that were not in there before. Under curriculum and instruction, we have our professional development. There's two items there to approve. Pupil special services are monthly update on our added district placements. And then we have a professional services there for Supreme Consultants, for some of our special education services, to approve them on an as-needed basis. After that, Mr. Shi, I believe we have finance.
Yes, Ms. Gluck. Ann, you want to go quickly? Yeah?
Yes. For finance, we have our monthly investment report, and then the Board Secretary report, and then the approval of the minutes from the June 29th public meeting. And then under finance resolutions, we have the transfer of funds, the award of people transportation bid for the 21-22 school year, the award of co-op bids and contracts for the 21-22 school year, approval of the non-public school aid for the 21-22 school year, obsolete items, the monthly bills list for June 2021, and the NJ DOE approval of roof replacements and renovation projects.
Okay. Thank you. So, board member, yeah, board member discussions for these resolutions. Any board members have any questions about the resolution items?
Yeah. Dr. Bragan, what did we change in the calendar?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
What did we change in the calendar?
The calendar was an addition of the parent-teacher conferences. There's no change in any of the school dates or any holidays.
Oh, there is no change?
No. The change was the addition of the parent-teacher conference dates. They were not in the original calendar. We approved that calendar. We did three years last year. This is actually year two of the calendar that we approved. And that far out, we weren't sure what the dates would be for the parent-teacher conferences. So they're included now in that calendar. No change in dates.
Any other board members' comments on the resolutions? Do you have any? Okay. I just have, yeah, resolutions, do you have any comments?
I just have a question on the calendar.
Yeah.
If you look at the key, we were just trying to figure it out. Red is school closed, and then there's one down further for staff report, no school for students?
Close.
You can't hear me?
Public.
Is there a day when that is during the school year? I couldn't find.
So the color coordination is in?
Yeah, there is not. You're talking about the orange identifier where the staff report, but there's no school for students.
And when is that?
There isn't on this calendar.
Oh, okay.
But there has been in the past. Like, we've done the former Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, where students weren't in school, but we had a professional development day. That would be one of those days. So we kept the, what do you want to call it, the matrix on the bottom, but in this year's calendar, we don't have any full-day PD days where there are staff required to go, but not students.
Because I was, it was so close, and the red, I'm trying to go through each one, and I couldn't find one that fit.
There are no orange on this one.
There you go.
Let's see if we will pay attention. You passed the test, let's see if you will pay attention.
Actually, I think Mrs. Podolsky got that test first, and she emailed me earlier. I'm just saying. Fair is fair.
I gave you a chance.
Okay. I just have a very quick question about the transportation. I saw some of the bids were rejected or no bid, and we are still going for that, right?
Yeah. We have about 415 transportation routes that we run in the district, and we actually met on it the other day. As of today, we have about 43 that are still outstanding, that we're putting out to bid. That's actually very good for this time of year where we are, with some of the conditions that the bus companies were dealing with, the shortage of drivers and things. We're confident we will have all our routes taken care of and be ready to go for September 1.
Thank you. All right. All right, so we're open up for public comments on resolutions only. So, any public who have comments on resolutions, feel free. We actually have two bottles of water there, so whoever gets there can take that bottle. Sitting on? All right, so we're going to move on. First, I'd like to have a motion on the personnel, labor relations, personnel only. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion.
Okay. Second?
Motion.
Okay. Bureau Patel and Mohan Patel.
Okay. Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes, motion is carried.
Thank you. So, second, we have administration, curriculum, and instruction, and pupil special services. Two, three, four. We'll bundle them together. Can I have a motion on that one?
Motion.
Okay. Bureau Patel, second?
Motion.
Okay. Mohan Patel.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes, motion is carried.
Last one, the finance resolutions, including investment report, Board Secretary report, approval of the minutes, and, you know, the finance resolution. So, can I have a motion on that one? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. All right. Bureau Patel and Mrs. Maduka, second.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Madiker?
Yes.
Ms. Podolsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes, motion is carried.
Thank you. So, we don't have any official committee reports submitted, but we did have a couple committee meetings. They were just happened yesterday and today. So I'd like to have Ginny, Mrs. White, talk about the Township Liaison Committee that they just had today, this morning.
Jerry, I had submitted my committee report on Friday to Judy. I had submitted my committee report on Friday to Judy.
Oh, okay. Do you have it?
I have it, I have it, yeah.
You can read it, okay, if you don't mind?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. We had a liaison committee meeting this morning.
Ginny, Ginny, get closer.
At 11 o'clock. It was between 11 and 12. So I don't have a complete report for you as yet, but, you know, we do cover an awful lot of areas at that meeting. The, I would say, the best thing that came out of it so far is that there's a very strong possibility that they will be signing Stelton School over to us. Not if, it does have to come up before the Township Council, not at this Township Council meeting, but the next one. So, you know, we kind of have to, you know, just kind of keep an eye on it. But things are looking good. It's, you know, baby steps, but it is moving forward. So until the, until I get a proper report for you, you know, if you could just bear with me till the next meeting, I would so appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Shivi, you want to go? Yeah?
Yeah, sorry. I had submitted it on Friday, maybe it was not.
It's fine, it's fine. Yeah, go.
Okay. So the Community Relations Committee held a Zoom meeting on June 21st at 7:00 PM. In attendance were Dr. Bragan, Dr. Alderelli, Carol Podolsky, Elizabeth Conway, Virginia White, and Shivi Maduka. This was a public meeting of the committee. Committee members gave updates on recent board initiatives and accomplishments. There was a smaller audience in attendance. There were also technical issues during the first 20 minutes of the meeting. As background, the committee is intended as a discussion platform. The end goal is to build better relations, as the name suggests. We focus on information sharing, giving people a chance to ask questions, provide a forum to exchange ideas, and generally brainstorm. Four board members attend this meeting, along with the superintendent. The next meeting will be held on August 30th, Monday, at 7:00 PM, right before school opening. The Zoom link will be available on our website and will also be shared on social media. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the other one, it's not an official committee, but the Finance and Facility Committee, we had a site visit of the Hudson, what is it, Technical School, right? So, Mrs. Conway, Mohan, if you want to just share with the public some of the highlights, whoever.
Sure. So last week, we had a site visit to the Hudson County Technical School, and it was one of the, one of the fine, like, schools that you can go. It's technically advanced, they had a lot of green initiatives in that building. So we got a chance to look at the high school itself, and the auditorium, and all the classrooms, and so forth, just to give us an idea, whenever we want to do some kind of new changes or anything for these schools, so we get a better idea of what's available out there, too. And it was actually excellent, and we got some great ideas. We'll report more next time, in the next meeting, so we'll have more details to it, too, as well.
You want to add anything to add? You want to? Do you want to add anything?
No, it's his job.
Huh? It's his job? Okay.
Oh, yes, I was there. It was an amazing complex that was paid for by the county. Wish we had the amount of money that was spent on that campus. It was phenomenal for the students that are able to go there, and hopefully, we got some good ideas that we can utilize within our district at a much more nominal fee, but always getting good ideas is the best part of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. So now we are open for, oh, did I, I didn't miss any other committees, right? Okay. All right. So now we're open for board member comments, open discussions, so we're going to go from this side. Yeah, Mrs. White?
All right. I just want to mention the parent help desk tonight. We are going to launch the food service link by the end of this week, so make sure you look for it. I did speak to Mr. Barkett today, and we're, you know, well on our way with that. So that's just going to be another good addition to the parent help desk, so please, you know, make use of it, and let's see how it works. I mean, there's, you know, we're just growing, and, you know, it's going to work out really well, I'm sure, but the food service will be on by the end of this week, so that's a good thing. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I forgot. Sorry. Oh, I forgot something. There's an announcement. The upcoming meeting is on August 17th. It's a combined meeting, and we're going back to Edison High School, 6:00. Your? 6:00. All right, August 17th, yes.
One of the very astute members of the audience had asked if Edison High is not air-conditioned, and if it's extremely hot, is there a chance of moving it to an air-conditioned school? Is there feasibility to do that? Marie, I thought that was a great idea.
We'll look into that, then. Yeah.
It's all I ask.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, Carol, anything? Board member comments?
No, I just hope that all the children and their families are having a really great time this summer, and I'm sure a lot of the teachers are, with their own families. And I know those of us up here are gearing up for starting the next year, which hopefully will be in better circumstances, but when you watch the news every night, you never know. But we've made it this far. The kids have been amazing, the parents have been amazing, the staff has been amazing, and a whole lot of people did a whole lot of work to make it look a lot easier than it was. And congratulations, you've made it this far.
I just have a question. I did notice we got an email regarding the new food service. Was there a food service committee meeting to go over what was going on during the summer, and how it was working out, and any forthcoming information come September regarding the food service?
Yes, in regards to the food service committee, we're definitely going to be having another meeting to just go over what has happened so far, and how we're improving, or how we can improve it. We gave it two weeks, so we get an idea and feel for how they're doing their job, so next meeting will be probably next week or the week after, and we'll discuss how we can improve, if there's anything needs to be improved. But actually, so far, a lot of the feedback that we got from parents are they're actually loving the food that they're getting. It's some of the great food that they, the kids are liking as well, so that's some of the feedback. And there's some glitches, but, you know, as any new service comes onboard, there's going to be something, some hiccups, but we're going to fix it before the school starts.
And have they made arrangements for, I know the federal government is allowing the free food going forward till, like, June of '22, is that correct? What kind of accommodations will the food service company have to make in order to be able to provide the service to everyone versus the way it was done in the past for, like, free and reduced lunch, and those just ordering? You know, how will that affect the new company being able to accommodate that, considering all the children as of today should be back in school in September? Will they be able to accommodate for the difference, is my question?
You want to answer that?
Yes, those are great questions, and we're definitely going to be looking into those and getting the answers before school starts. So we're going to make sure that we have our ducks in order before the school starts, so the next meeting, we're going to be discussing those questions. Thank you for being on my.
Yeah, Dr. Bragan, you want to add?
Yeah, we've been planning for that since our last meeting, if you remember, on June 29th, when Maschus was awarded the contract. Our first order of business was to work really quickly and transition to get that up and running, so that the food service could start seamlessly in July. And as board member Mohan Patel said, there was a couple of snafu's, but for the most part, they did a great job, they've been very responsive, trying to get as food to as many people as possible, and the board made that a commitment, a priority, we heard that, and so far, it's been going well. The plan all along was for September, and with the expectation that the food and the meal distributions would be free for all students, we do anticipate many more students obviously taking advantage of that. We're planning for it, and we don't anticipate any issues, and I think they're well positioned to deal with that. Every day, they get more acclimated to being in Edison and dealing with our systems here and our students, and I think it'll just progress throughout the school year. But as this board has said, and as Mrs. Podolsky said, this, you know, the district is accustomed to changing and pivoting when needs present themselves, as they did over the last 18 months or more. And if there's changes that need to be made in the food service to make sure we're providing enough meals for everyone in need, I'm sure we'll do that, and we'll do it as quickly as we can. We do anticipate it not being an issue, though, moving forward, and since June 29th, when Maschus has been here, they've been extremely responsive to me personally, to our people that are working, Anne Gluck and Pat Cassan, and doing the day-to-day operations, as well as at JP Stevens and Edison High School. So I would anticipate that to continue.
Thank you. Anything else you want to say?
I'm good, thank you.
Board member comments? No? Okay. Mrs. Peng? Okay. Dr. Chen?
I actually had a related question on food services. I just wanted to know that when people order food and enter the information, is the information stored by our system or by the company?
That's a really good question. I don't want to give you the wrong answer, I'll find out. I don't know.
Yeah, because I would want that the data for our students and all those emails should be stored within our school system and not with any private entity.
Okay. We'll take a look at that. As I said, the initial concern was making sure we got all the information for everyone that requested meals in the summer to get it out, but we'll follow up and see where that information is.
Thank you.
Okay. So for food services, there are a couple of things that I brought to Dr. Bragan's attention. One of them, asking them when he was in France, right? Asking them to check the, make the, check the list and provide food to those who enroll. So they did that last week, so thank you for that, and thank you to Patrick. I hope he, when he sees this video, so, in your absence, he took care of that. Second thing is cancellation of the order for those who don't want it, because there was a lot of wastage reported for the week one. So you took care of that one as well, Dr. Bragan, so that's, that's very good. Thank you for that. So we, when we come in fall, we also want to make sure that we have a process in place where we allow only the parents or children who want to consume meals to have the meals and avoid the wastage. And I know first couple of weeks will be like trial, and, you know, try to get used to it, but eventually, like we, how we evolved this time, we can evolve that time as well, and make sure there is no wastage. So that's all. And a lot of residents are already concerned about reopening of the schools, right? So whether there will be masks, or there will be sanitizers, or there will be remote learning, and things like that. So I would say the best thing to do right now is enjoy the summer, and I know it's good to, we have one and a half months of summer, but we are, at the same time, they would like to hear from district what's the plan right now. So I spoke with Dr. Bragan briefly, and he would update the district on that, where do we stand right now.
You always ask the toughest questions, Mr. Podolsky. Yeah, I think Mrs. Conway and even Mrs. Podolsky mentioned it, too. Our plan all along is for September of this year to be the same as September of 2019. God willing, we open up back to school, full-time, in person, as we sit up here at the table here, masks not being required. Obviously, if people want to wear masks, they're comfortable to do that, but that wouldn't be a requirement or a contingent upon entering the buildings, as we would hope. And that is still our plan moving forward. As you know, the governor's executive orders all expired, that we're dealing with the pandemic, that they're no longer in effect, you know, for some of the requirements as far as social distancing and things like that. And if you asked me two weeks ago, I would say I'm 100% confident everything will be back to normal in September, but with the recent increases with this Delta variant and the other variants in the virus, I'm cautiously optimistic, but a little bit concerned. So on July 20th, I think we have to wait and see where the parameters are in our state, what the virus's penetration is in the state, and what the regulations and the rules are from the governor and the Department of Education. It's too early to make a definitive call. I hope we're back to normal, I hope we're back to the way we were in September of 2019, but again, I would say that at this point, we're cautiously optimistic, and we have to adjust to what the needs are. As you know, if you follow the news, right? Concerns about the Olympics and things like that are ever-present in the news, so since January, the number of cases in our country declined almost every day when you looked at the two-day period, the two-week period from before. If you look at the last two weeks across the nation, that's gone in the other direction. So it's concerning. I'm cautiously optimistic in New Jersey with the percentage of people that are vaccinated that will be okay, but we'll know, we'll know more definitively by our August 17th board meeting.
Could I, could I ask a question? I know when I've heard Governor Murphy speaking, and he's given his opinion over time, but he always seems to slide in that the local districts can make the decision for the local districts. Could you kind of, what basis will you be making that decision for our district?
I'm not sure what decision that you mean, but I do know that the governor did say definitively that the only option is in-person instruction, except for those that are medically fragile. So that-
And what about masks?
Mask wearing, I would follow the protocol from the Department of Ed, which basically at this point says that they encourage students to wear masks, but we wouldn't make that a requirement. And staff and adults in the building, especially if they're vaccinated, have the option, it's up to them. That would be my recommendation at this point, again, on July 20th. Things may be very different on September 1st, right, depending on how things go. I'm optimistic and as we did throughout this pandemic, although every member of the board didn't agree, I did try to seek consensus on what we were doing. And then we've had discussions about whether we're in, we're out, and some of us were on board with that, some of us weren't. I would try to reach a consensus with the board because we, you know, we work better when we work together.
Anyone else? Okay.
Jerry?
Yes.
Can I speak on something else?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
My remarks are related to a personnel, are related to a personnel decision made last month, but they do not in any way address a personnel issue. As a member of the Personnel Committee, I am well aware of the rules that guide our action as Board of Ed members. These comments address overcrowding, supervision, and curriculum in an effort to ensure the best instruction in all our visual and performing arts classes while aligning with state standards. The New Jersey Learning Standards for Visual and Performing Arts describe the expectations for literacy and fluency in five artistic disciplines: dance, music, theater, visual arts, media arts. And they include five subdivisions for music: general music, grades K to eight, guitar, keyboarding, and harmonizing instruments, traditional and emerging ensembles, composition in theory, and theory in music. Here in Edison, we have traditionally had one supervisor of music and art. This year, our finalists were one music teacher and one art teacher, each highly qualified in one field of the arts. Each artistic discipline has independent skills, knowledge, and content. However, as a field, the arts are interdependent, connected, and inclusive. The New Jersey SLS VPA are designed to guide the delivery of arts education in the classroom with new ways of thinking, learning, and creating. The vision of all students having equitable access to a quality arts education is only achieved when the five arts disciplines are offered continuously through the K to 12 spectrum. It was suggested by several Board of Ed members that the size of our district, combined with the popularity and success of our artistic disciplines, have created a need for two separate but connected departments, each led by one supervisor, would provide better leadership to these vital programs than a single overloaded supervisor. South Brunswick, for example, has chosen to go that route. Here in Edison, our schools are overcrowded, mainly due to the high caliber educational experience we provide to our students. Over the years, we have had to build schools or add to existing schools to provide room for the increasing number of students. Our staff, including principals, supervisors, coaches, has also increased. That is a natural consequence of growth in student population and less costly than building new schools, yet effective in maintaining the highest levels of instruction. That is what I am again suggesting we do here. Mrs. Conway brought this up last month, but it did not happen. I am very concerned about the impact this decision may have on some of our most highly-rated programs. Band, choir, and strings bring back overwhelming numbers of trophies, awards, and accomplishments year after year. My concern is whether this will continue when all of the arts are united and supervised by a visual arts instructor. Mrs. Conway tried to make this suggestion last month, but for whatever reason, the board chose to ignore her motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? All right. So that's my turn. Dr. Bragan, I have a question for you. One of the questions, you know, Bureau already asked about the September in-person versus virtual. The other question is, oh, can you give us an update on the Lincoln's?
Yeah. The Lincoln project is moving ahead as anticipated. We actually met with the awarded contractor, Mr. Colubus, myself, the architectural team, and Mr. Barker to discuss the process moving forward. And we were impressed with Palpro. They came to the table with a plan already laid out and their timeframes and had things moving in place that typically don't happen until you have that meeting. So they came to the table ready to go and we're really excited about it. It's on time. The first thing we're gonna do is remove the trailers that are there. We have that already scheduled to be, the portables that are in the back in some of the construction areas. Then they're gonna work on the ground to make sure we identify the areas where the construction is gonna take place, so they're gonna fence in that area and fence it off. And then we looked at the shovels in the ground and start the foundations in August. So as far as we met and the timelines, everything they anticipate, soup to nuts being around nine to 10 months, you take into account some inclement weather and some things. We're hopeful that everything will be ready to go in September of '22.
Okay. Thank you. I just still want to add that the original plan was we're gonna leave the two trailers there, but now with the safety concerns of those two trailers will be moved to other locations.
Yeah, there was a concern on the site, you know, like anything, when you start the project, you get a better look and a better feel for what's gonna take place. When we looked at the amount of construction equipment that's gonna be required for the addition and the duration it's gonna take place, that one trailer that would be there, it's, it's, it's not beneficial, really, and we couldn't have the classes in at the time. And then afterwards, it, it would be somewhat of an eyesore right behind the new construction there, which we hope is gonna look really inviting and enhance the overall school and have this, you know, for lack of a better word, you know, portable trailer just standing there. So, yeah, we're gonna reallocate that to an area where it's, as we discussed at our meeting the other day, where it's more needed.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So that's it for-
Jerry?
Yes?
Could I just ask us, I know many of the meetings were in an untimely fashion as far as getting a copy of the committee minutes. Can we have the committee chairs email their minutes to us so that I can have them for my file?
Sure, sure. And, yeah, there, there will be, you know, some of the ones, like I say, the one that she we had, it will be part of the meeting minutes anyway, because that's already submitted. Yeah, if they actually wrote some of this, because Genie's meeting just this morning, 11 o'clock, so it's, you know, and-
And the finance meeting was yesterday.
Finance yesterday.
We'll, we'll have those typed up.
We'll have, we'll have those.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, you know, yeah. Next, next meeting, we'll have the finance and-
Liaison.
Yeah, liaison. All right. Okay, so now we're open up for public comments. Maria, you're closer. Take a bottle of water if you want. Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Maria Orgut, 83, Jefferson. My first question, I noticed there's a, about the construction for the roof for Edison High, Thomas Jefferson, and Washington Elementary. Did we go for any grants for those roof projects? What is the pro, progress on our overcrowding come September? We're going to be having a large student population. On August 2nd through August 8th, that'll be the Middlesex County Fair. Just if something you wanted to do, I always have a good time going to them. It's kind of like a four-each kind of feel. On August 8th, also, there's the Indian Day Parade, which I love. That goes from Oak Tree Road from Edison to Woodbridge, and it's a wonderful cultural event. Also, if we could have a timeline on the esports. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Dr. Bragan?
I can answer a few of those. The esports arena at Edison High School should be up and running. Construction-wise, all should be done for the start of school. We are concerned that some of the technical computer components may not be in because of delays in the supply chain, as you're seeing across every industry, especially automobiles and things that are technically involved. We're hopeful, but at the latest by October, fingers crossed, you know, we're waiting on some of the technology pieces, but the actual place and structure in the Edison High School media center will be completed by opening of school. Regarding the roofing contracts, we didn't apply for grants specifically for those. That's part of our annually budgeted capital outlays, you know, to repair a number of roofs on an annual basis. It's not something glamorous or pretty that people think about, but when they fail, we all know about it, right? So those are things that we have to work on. You asked one other question about the progress. The overcrowding, you know, obviously, that's always at the forefront of the board's mind. Some of the additional monies we receive in State aid are dedicated specifically to capital projects to ease that concern. As Mr. Patel and Mrs. Conway, Mr. She mentioned, at some of the Finance and Facility Committee meeting, we took a trip to see the Hudson County School of Technical Science, or I believe what it was called, in Secaucus. And we're looking at that for the possible property on Towneedge and Coolidge to add a school there that could alleviate the overcrowding in both of our high schools. Very preliminary stages and having discussions. And we looked at, we met with the architect, too, to plan some possible additions to our schools. But these things take time, Ms. Orket. That will not be done in September. You know, one of the immediate things we did do in September was at John P. Stevens High School. One of those portables from Lincoln Elementary School, which is two classrooms, will be over there. It's, it's an eyesore. It's not pretty, but it provides additional space that we can have. They also made some adjustments to the media space in this building, right, to accommodate larger groups in lunch, so the students could spread out more and we could, you know, eat, have a place for them to eat where it's not as congested and as crowded. I think this board, as well as the administrative team's committed to doing all we can, but capital and infrastructure projects take time. It's not gonna happen overnight, but we are, we are, it's the mission that I've been given, as well as the board, to address that issue.
Yeah, just want to add about the grants for the roofs and stuff, but we have applied the grants for other things, so we're gonna use those money. One of the stuff that we're gonna use is the putting HVAC in both of the cafeterias in the high schools, and we're gonna redo the auditorium in Edison High. And those are the things that, you know, we applied for those grants, so that, we're gonna use that money. Okay? Yes?
Good evening, everyone. Padmaja Chinta, Edison. I want- Hi. I wanted to talk briefly about the food vendor selection. I understand the vendor has been selected, but I wanted to share a couple of comments or suggestions, hoping that next time, maybe things could be done differently. There was quite a bit of time spent at the last meeting discussing the vendor selection process, and, but it seemed to me that the process was a bit rushed. It was not until I sat here for almost two hours and after two rounds of public comments that I heard for the first time that the deadline for selecting the food vendor was the following day, and there was no way the board could have pushed the decision, even if they wanted to. I understand that, you know, timing is not always in our, in our hands, so my request or suggestion is, in future, if there is any important topic that requires public input, if the board can please put that on the agenda enough in advance so that they can truly consider any concerns or comments raised by the public. That would be really appreciated. The second thing I wanted to talk about is how law was invoked to explain the actions or inactions of the board. Talking about the food vendor selection, it was said that the online reviews of the vendor could not be considered because it was not explicitly listed as a criteria for vendor selection. If I recall, the sampling of the food was also not listed as a specific criteria, but the board members, you know, decided to sample the food, and that was absolutely the right decision to make because that helps them decide on the quality of the food. But the same thing should, you know, go, goes for the online reviews as well. It doesn't matter whether they look at the reviews and decide it moves the needle or doesn't move the needle, but to say that they are not even allowed to look at it doesn't seem right. In my experience, law is rarely formulated or interpreted to go against common sense. So again, my request is, in future, if the board can keep a more open or broader approach when making these kind of decisions, it would be helpful. Finally, I have one last question. This is about the AP Spanish course. I believe Dr. Bragan had mentioned at one of the meetings that he was going to look into the possibility of having the AP Spanish course. I wanted to see if any progress has been made on that. Thank you.
I could answer that one. We, we already offer AP Spanish. We offer it at both high schools. Advanced Placement Spanish is offered at both high schools. It's been offered.
All right. Any other comments on public? Sinan? All right? Can I have a motion to adjourn? All right, you have a second? Okay. I'm Mohan Patel and Mrs. Maduka. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, I'll see you guys next month. Thank you very much.